Call the meeting of the reference township board trustees to order. Lord Christie, please take the roll.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Mr. Christie here. Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy is absent. Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. McCray.
Here. The former president, the purpose of the meeting is to discuss the 2024-2025 water budget. Director Bonner, if the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mrs. Supervisor. Good afternoon, honorable board. Good to see all of you here this evening as we discuss our largest single budget in the township, the Water and Sewer Fund. So, as usual, I gave you lots of handouts for us to review this evening. And as we get into this discussion that we've been working on this for several months, and as has been the case for the last several years, former finance director John Kuba has been really actively involved in preparing this budget. And I just have to say thank you to him for that because he really enjoys working on this project and he understands the water and sewer system in a way that I'm not sure anyone else here in the township does, other than maybe like Tom, who's had to work in it for all these years. So, just have to say thank you to John for that. You should be somewhat familiar, and we're going to start with the two really big pieces of paper that are in front of you, the big legal size, ledger size, excuse me, pieces of paper. And this is the, we're going to look at the one that says at the top of it, version one, up here at the top, it says version one. We're going to look at this one first. So, this sheet and the numbers that are on this sheet really drive everything else. This is the sheet that is used to calculate the rates. It is also the sheet where we calculate based on the rates, all of the budgetary numbers that feed into the budget. So, whenever we change something on here, it has an impact everywhere else on the sheets. And if I can just review a little bit of what's on here, on the top right gives you the assumptions of what is happening with our purchasing and selling process. So, we are assuming for the purpose of this upcoming water year, which begins on, what's the first, Sunday? Sunday? Monday?
Monday.
Monday. Begins on Monday, that we're going to purchase 1,548,000 units of water. And that we're going to sell 1,362,000. And we're going to have a water loss factor of 12%. That's why we have the point 88 there. We also have below that what the rate increases are from the various groups. For the first one, for Rouge Valley, we are using 3% here. Rouge has gotten into this habit where they only give us rate increases every few years. And then when they do, they give us a really big increase. So, this is the second or third year in a row where they have not given us a rate increase. So, instead of getting a 15% increase all at one time, when they decide to do it, we generally estimate 3% every year. And that way, it's not as big of a change when it actually comes. The Gleewa Sewer Increase, I know that number looks really, really large at 27%, but it looks really bad, but it's actually not really bad. They did a big review and they changed the way that they calculate and assign some of their expenses, which is what caused that technical number to shift. But the actual increase on the expense side was only like $15,000 total for the year. So, it was actually really minimal. It just looks like a really large number. And we have 4.2% from Gleewa for the commodity, the ratable side of their charges, and 2.3% from Gleewa on the fixed side. So, those are the assumptions that kind of drove what's happening within our system. About, if you look at the yellow box, that's about a third of the way down the page. It says 15,595,000. And then just over to the left of it where it says 22,823,000, that's the total budget for this year. I don't know why I didn't highlight that one. It should be highlighted too. It's highlighted on version three and it's not highlighted here. So, this year's budget that we're proposing is 22,823,000. Right below that is the year that we're ending, which was at 20,228,000. The difference is 2.5 million. The majority of that is due to the increase that we are absorbing related to the CSO Central Basin. So, last year, well, two years ago, we began working into the rate, the expected capital cost related to the CSO Central Basin. And so, as of last year, we had already worked in $1 million for that. And we've been using that money from the last couple of years to pay for all the upfront engineering and design costs as we go along. The expectation from, that we will have to begin making principal payments in this upcoming year is that that will be about $2 million in interest payments for this year, and then an additional million or so the year following. So, we've worked in about two-thirds of the expected cost at this point for the central CSO basin. And that's the majority of what this change was, is related to that. There's also some changes related to some other capital things in the Dwarf Project, and we can talk about that in a minute. So, that's the majority of the change. So, what did this all mean in the end? If we choose to do the traditional way that we assess the water bill, which is why we have this version one here, what would happen is that the, in that green column, you'll see that the total rate for a unit of water and sewer would increase from $10.67 to $11.45. That's a 7.3% increase. That is the change on the water, sewer, and CSO side. And if you look to the columns to the right, you'll see that the cost for water itself, the light blue column, actually is going down. And the cost for sewer is going up a little bit. And of course, the big change is in the CSO on the far right. The other fee, of course, is the base fee. So, right above the halfway point here, it's kind of highlighted, you have total base fee for 24-25 budget of $34.29. And that would be a slight decrease, a 1% decrease, or a 3% decrease on the base fee. So, you have a 7% increase on the ratable side and a slight decrease on the base fee. So, that's the way that that works itself out in terms of the traditional format. But this isn't the format that we are recommending to you this evening. I wanted to show this to you because I think it's important that you see what we've been doing for the last couple of decades. But one of the first things that John Kuba said to me when I was appointed as the finance director was that we really needed to change the way that we assess our service line fee. And what we mean by the service line is you have the line that's coming into your house. And for most people in a household, that's either a 5/8 line or a 3/4 inch line. But we have lines that range from that size all the way up to a 10-inch line. So, Pinnipool, for example, has a 10-inch line. Diesel has an 8-inch line. And those groups are paying the same amount of money for that line, that massive 8-inch and 10-inch line, as the person with the 3/4 and 5/8 inch line. Even though the actual demand on the system is completely different, right? The infrastructure and the lines and the pipes and the fittings and everything that has to go into that line is completely different for that really large line than it is for the small line coming into your house. And none of our neighboring communities do it that way. Everybody else around us assesses the base fee and they assess a service line fee based on the size of that line coming into your house or into your business, whichever it may be. Because even though you may not use that line at all times, when you do want to use that line, it's putting that whole drain on the system all at that one time. And that 10-inch line, based on the mathematics and the formulas, uses about 70 times more, more water, more demand, creates 70 times the demand of an individual home, but they're paying the same fee. So, we looked at what would happen then if we were to change and move to allocating this service line fee based on the size of that line. And that's what's the other big sheet. So, if you look at the sheet that says version three at the top, which is traditional with the meter allocation. What happens in this scenario is if you notice in the green columns, the cost for a unit of water doesn't change. That's not changing at all. And the cost for the overall budget itself, over there, it's highlighted in orange in about the middle there, right? That's exactly the same. The budget itself is not changing. What is changing dramatically is what happens with the base fee. So, if we go to this version three, that's the traditional allocation with the meter allocation, the base fee goes from being 35.51 all the way down to 23.15. It's a massive decrease for our residents. It's a 34% decrease on that base fee. And then the difference then gets allocated out amongst all the businesses that have larger lines. And I can show you what that looks like, but before I do that, does anybody have any questions about this sheet specifically, before I show you what happens when we do that allocation? So, if you flip to the backside of the second sheet, you'll see down here, the section down here where we've got all the various meter sizes, the number of customers who have that size, and what their bimonthly fee would be on their bill every two months. So, as you can see, the 5/8 and the 3/4 inch, you know, we have 20,082 total customers, that's residential, industrial, and commercial altogether. And over, you know, 19,600 of them have the 5/8 or 3/4. So, there's only 400, 450 or so who have those larger lines. And you can see then that by doing this allocation, which is going to save our residents a significant amount of money on their bill every two months, where then it shifts it to the larger, to the businesses who have those really large lines. So, like, we only have the one 10-inch line. So, instead of paying the 35.51 that every homeowner is paying right now, they would be paying 5.6635. And Diesel, we have the one 8-inch, you know, they'd be going, they'd be paying 404. And then we have six, we have three 6 inches and nine 4 inches. You see the breakdown. So, that's where we're making up that revenue. And if you look then at this sheet. Which one? This one. Except I just picked up the wrong one.
I thought you did. Supposed to be the plain one, right?
Well, I have both versions because we were looking at the other ones. So, it should say on the right there, version one, traditional, and below it, version three, traditional with allocation on the far right side. Sheet, right?
Yep.
So, okay, so on the left half of this page is our residential customers. And you can see that with the proposed change, so this is based on the units on their bills, so one unit, two, five, six, seven, 10, and 20. So, you can see for our residential consumers, if we go with the version one, the traditional format, that's their projected bill. And if we go with the version three, the traditional with the meter allocation, what their projected bill is. And on the residential side, it is a savings for every single resident. Doesn't matter how much water you're using, you're going to save money if we go to the residential side of this. The commercial side then, it may, commercial industrial makes sense, they're losing money on this, right? So, because they're making up the difference. On their side, you can see on the right side of the page what happens from the commercial industrial side. The numbers that we used at the top there, the 10, 22, 39, 60, 86, those numbers, we pulled those as a random sampling of actual bills for consumers who have pipes of that size. So, it shows you what would be the difference in their bill from the old rate to the new rate. So, even though it sounded really drastic to say like, well, wait, they're going to, you know, Diesel's going to go from paying $35 per bill, and now they're going to be paying that $404, right, for that fixed fee, because of the way we changed the allocation with the way the water usage happens, it's actually for them, it's only a $400 difference on their water bill. Like, they have a $4,000 water bill, they're going to have a $4,400 water bill. But Diesel is a company, right, those larger companies, is much more able to absorb that than our homeowners are able to absorb that. And that's why, and again, this is really why all of our surrounding communities do this now. I don't really have a good answer for why we don't do it. Like, we did do it back in like the 60s and 70s, and then we stopped. And I haven't really been able to get from anybody why we stopped doing it. So, but because the treasurer cabinet will tell you that like all the billing codes exist in the system already for us to be able to do this, they just have been inactive. So, it's really just in many ways restoring the way we used to do this. But by doing this now, when we have, we're getting this big hit from the CSO basin, we think this is the right time because it's going to soften again the blow as we're absorbing that debt payment onto our books and making a more equitable allocation across the board based on how much you actually use the system. So, that's why we're proposing, you know, this shift in the way that we allocate these fees. It has no impact on the budget whatsoever itself. It just has an impact on where the various budget pieces come into play. What questions do you have about that?
Actually, I have a question from the first one.
Okay.
The 3% that we've built in for increases, does that go into a reserve?
Yes.
Do you know how much we have in that reserve now?
Not off the top of my head, because it's just within the fund balance within that fund.
Just curious.
Yeah.
We've done that before. As you said, we've done it years, so we plan three, three, and three, and all of a sudden Rouge Valley is open night. We just have it, and we don't have to do it, do any more large increases.
Right.
This happened about four years ago, where they did so the 12% and we already had it.
We don't know why Rouge does that, but that's just, that's the way they've been operating now for many years.
It's like about every three or four years, they've gone through a run.
We did initially, with the water department team and supervisor McCray and treasurer cabinet, we did initially look at four variations of the allocations. We narrowed it down to these two, the traditional and traditional allocation, but we did have four at one point. So, that was what we narrowed it down to, was those two. I think, you know, beyond that, you know, when you look at the other, you know, handouts that are here, so the one that looks like this, right? The five-year comparison. This is the one where you can see, and I've been doing this every year, you know, like, so what's happened in our rates from the last five years over time? And I did this assuming the household with a 5/8 inch service line. So, that's a, you know, I never had to make that specific determination before, but since we're changing the way we're doing this. But you can see that over the five years, you know, we're doing this 7% increase on the ratable side, right, for this one year. But our average increase over the last five years has averaged 3.6% every year. And it really, well, it's not great, it's certainly not bad, and given how super high inflation has been over the last five years, the fact that we've been able to keep that to an average of 3.6% is actually pretty impressive and says a lot about the team that we have working in the water and sewer department. And then on the base fee side below that, you can see, you know, we're doing a 5% increase, but it's only averaged 2.2% over time. And then below that, I have actual examples again of what residents' bills would look like. So, the bill they got in May or June of this year versus what the bill would look like after July 1st, if we go to this. So, again, about half of our households have this 5/8 inch of a line. The other half have a 3/4 inch line. Theirs would be exactly the same, except it would be $4.05 more, because that's the difference in that allocation from the 5/8 to the 3/4. And then this one, the one that's got the pie chart on it, you know, this is what they call the rate card, you know, that's the one that gets, this gets sent to all of our residents with the water quality report every year. So, they can see exactly on here the various buckets of where all the money is going. And again, you know, the big one that's changed on here from the prior year, of course, is on the CSO basin, is the debt retirement, because we're adding in debt for the CSO basin that we didn't have before. So, this year, so the total, you know, projection for the CSOs for this upcoming year is about 2.8 million, where prior to the beginning of the work on the central basin, it was only about 1 million. So, that's the additional cost that's already coming on to the books for the central basin. Now, in talking to John and looking at our forecasting, when we were originally looking at this, it was looking much, I'm going to be very, it was looking much worse. And the reason was because we have that Dwarf project out there, right, the one, the $12 million, with the 10 million for the lines, and the 2 million for lead that we've applied for, right, for the subsidized funding. And we originally had that worked into this year's budget, but then we realized that even if we do get approved for that subsidized interest rate on that, it won't hit until the following year's budget, which is good because it's helping us smooth this along. So, I feel pretty confident at this point that we have more or less fully brought on to the water rates, the expenses related to the central CSO basin. Next year, we'll have to bring on the expense related to the Dwarf project, which will be about, if we do it for 20 years, it'll be about $770,000 a year. If we do it for 30 years, I know that was a question that was asked, it'll be about $575,000 a year. So, that'll get added on to the rate. But I think that's the only major increase that will happen. When it comes time for the South basin, we will not really have to work that into the rates until probably fiscal year 30. So, we have some time for this to kind of settle in, which also gives us some time to continue to work and shake the money trees in Lansing and in Washington to help us with that South project, right? We'll take any dime we can get. You know, the train's already moving for the central project, not that we can't use more money, but that project is moving, right? But this gives us time to really work on getting more support for that South basin project. In the interim, we think because we were proactive on ensuring that we began working some of the expected costs into the rate early, so we had that upfront money, well, we'll essentially kind of get reimbursed for that when we get the bonds, which means we then have the seed money to pay for all the upfront costs for the South basin. So, I know that's a lot, this is a lot of numbers, but I think for having to deal with a really complicated situation for the central and south basins, we're in about as good a position as we could be in terms of the impact to our residents, the businesses, and the community as a whole. The other couple of handouts that I provided, one, of course, is the actual.
Can we get questions on the handout first?
Of course. I thought Kim's first.
Okay.
Adam, the only question I have is when I'm looking at base rates, when you showed us this.
Yeah.
By your friend. This, these figures are based on version one, because if we're using fixed rate of 23.15 in version three, you've got the total base rate for 2024 is 35.51 and 31.24 respectively?
It's because, look at the number that's right above the 31.24.
Yeah.
The 8.09. That's the supply line fee, that's the new fee. So, now every bill is going to have the base fee and a supply line fee. And that supply line fee is going to be based on your line size.
So, everybody's going to see a supply line fee, even at 5/8?
Yes. So, for the 5/8, it'll be 8.09. And then that was what was on the backside of the page, so for 5/8, it'll be 8.09.
Starting in 2025?
Starting July 1st.
Okay, because they just said 2024, there was no.
Right, it's zero before that because we didn't, that, we worked it all into the base fee.
Starting July 1st, it'll be 8.09 for anybody with.
With the 5/8. And anybody with a 3/4, it'll be 12.14.
So, we had those numbers together.
And anybody with the 1 in.
23.15.
Yes.
With those two little fees, that's where you get those numbers.
Yes.
You're going to get that, that total baseline fee.
Exactly.
And that's going to be explained when they get this? That's going to be a new piece?
I don't know how we're going to explain it yet. We haven't quite gotten to that piece, but we're going to have to figure out how we're going to explain it for sure.
Or let's just call it the supply line fee.
That is what we're going to call it, is the supply line service charge.
Your number. Don't put 3/4, it's too pretty. Your number. Don't put the three-quarters, it's too crazy. It's, you'd have to create all these different bills.
And I think it's going to say on there, treasurer cabinet, we had a, and I had a brief conversation about this on Friday, but I think it will show on their bill, supply line service charge five-eights, supply line service charge two-inch.
Oh, because it's already in the system now?
Right.
Correct.
So I, I do think we are going to get questions about it, because it's, they're not going to have seen it before, but I think it will be easy to explain, because it's tied directly to that service line size.
The hard part is gonna be explaining how that, that new fee's saving the money.
It is.
That's gonna be the hard part.
Which is why I think stuff like this, I have a feeling that I may be posting pictures of things like this on Facebook two-point-oh.
Yeah. Yeah, and then some.
Exactly. Yes.
Or even if we can put it somewhere on the webpage of the water sewer, explaining the new rates and what they're for, if there's a place on, on your section of the face, or not Facebook page, but our webpage.
Yes, and we, we would upload it there anyway, but you're probably, that's probably a great point. We should probably also include an explanation of what changed.
The link is to where they can go to for further explanation, yeah.
We haven't had it in the past without putting into rates like that, on the online per se, and just a quick explanation. This will set-
That'd be great.
Okay. In fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four, we had capital replacement. That is now gone. Is the supply line B replacing that B? Because when you look at twenty-four versus twenty-five, it is a decrease in the total rate.
Yes, it basically is. So the numbers that we put into that was the money that we, as a standard set, so the, the, the way we came up with that allocated amount for that service line fee was we took the standard capital set aside that we've been doing every year, which is four hundred thousand for water mains, four hundred thousand for sewer mains, and five hundred and twenty-six thousand for phase thirteen. So that added up to one point three million. That one point three million used to be covered by that capital replacement line and is now being covered by this supply line fee.
Okay.
Yes. And we did that because, you know, there, there are some fees that are, it doesn't matter if you are, you know, it doesn't matter if you're Murphy's, if you're Diesel, or if you're, you know, Trustee Taylor's house, right? The actual cost to print a bill, pay for the bill, mail it, all that, though that cost is the same, right? So we, so those, and that's the stuff that's in the base fee, because that's equitable to every single household, they're paying the same amount. But this side of the capital is really dependent on how is, what's being spent to feed into your specific residence or business. And so you should be paying a different amount based on the line, the demand you have on that system.
So if, if I can ask a question from a service side of things? So the idea of having that service line is to cover also any potential breaks, repairs, et cetera? And logic would tell you it's gonna cost a heck of a lot more to repair an eight-inch line or a ten-inch line than a five-inch.
Exactly.
And that's why a lesser service fee for a smaller line, less labor-intensive, less cost of effort, et cetera?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. All right. The other two handouts that I, I provided them, but we don't necessarily need to discuss them unless you have specific questions. One is simply the current capital plan, that's the one that's on the legal size piece of paper. I only printed it for the group fiscal twenty-seven, that's this, right? But, um, so, um, similar to, and this is the other thing that we did a couple of years ago that I think has helped us from a budget perspective. And we had started doing this for police and fire several years ago, where we're trying to allocate the same amount of money every year for capital so that the money is there as equipment comes up and needs to be replaced. It's not having, we're not changing the budget allocation every single year. And so this is just showing you, ladies, are all the different categories of what's happening within the capital side. And we have a full twenty-year projection of where we're going, and it prints all twenty years. And some of the items that are in this fiscal twenty-five did actually happen in fiscal twenty-four, I just haven't moved them back up yet. That's why fiscal twenty-five looks like it's really long, but it's really not. But there's nothing new on here, this is all the stuff that we were anticipating happening. With the exception of one new project that we also had to work into the rates this year, is the fact that we are going to have to replace the meter interface units. I am not going to explain that well, Director Dennis.
And just come up to the mic, please, Mike.
I can talk loud?
We know, we know that.
We wanna see your face.
Guys are a good crowd, I appreciate that. And I'm not gonna be coughing today like two weeks, well, I shouldn't.
Now, now Adam's sick, you made him sick.
So these are the units that are outside that we have six readers throughout Redford Towers that read our, our, our meters. Our company that provides them has said that the units are reaching their, their life, and we need to start moving to replace these. So we are currently putting together a plan over three years. We have twenty, let's say roughly twenty-one, twenty-two thousand units between, you know, residential, commercial, and industrial properties. And we're gonna do it over a three-year period, starting from south to north. Reason we want to start in the south is because we will, we don't have a big payment yet regarding the CSO basin. So we could, you know, Director Bonner stated that we will be doing a small bond on this, just so we'll come rate, and we'll do it over a three-year period. South end has more, more units. And so we would get that on the way now, compare, and then work our way north. So right now, we're projecting three years. So it's something that we're trying to start this year if possible. If not, we'll start next year, but we're working on that this week. I don't have any definitive plans yet. Tom, myself, Sean, they're all working on plans, and then we'll share it with, obviously, treasurer cabinet, Adam, and the board when we get moving on. But we're hoping to have a RFP out next couple of months for it.
So that's already been worked into, that was part of the rate increase for this year and that, but that's really the only major change to the capital plan from what was already, has been presented in the past. And then the other-
Go ahead. Go ahead, oh.
Do you know what the total cost is gonna be to replace all those meters?
About six million. Ouch.
Yeah.
It's not the water meter, it's a small unit.
Yeah, it's the unit that's outside your house.
Yes.
That they used to, the men used to, yeah, the, the men used to hook up to it in order to read.
To read?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, just really quickly.
If they mail it to me, I'll install it myself.
If only it was.
If only.
Just a, just a quick comment. I know we, we've got a lot going on here and it's, it's, it's overwhelming. I mean, just for me, myself, and I've been in this before, but I think it, it goes hand in hand, just like the dwarf, where we're going from twenty to thirty possibly, because it makes sense to sort of try to not spend so much money all at once. I think with the meter replacement, that can be put off for a year. I think that with this list, that there is four vans that we need, that if we try to slow down, instead of buying four, buy two. That way, not all four go out at the same time. But we have to try to at least, I know when we were meeting about the budget, I know this isn't changing the budget, but it's the expenses also, because they go hand in hand. I think we have to be methodical, we have to make sure that if we can put it out a little bit, maybe half of it, go ahead and put it out, because we never know what may came, come in for the south end CSO. And the news that we got today is, is part of the fact that we may get little by little, you know, to chisel away at the huge rock that we see ourselves in. So it's just a comment that I think that everybody's worked well together, ever, I mean, John, Adam, Jacqueline, Mike, Tom, Sean, everybody, in trying to not make the residents suffer, because they suffering now. And it's, it's really difficult, especially me trying to collect water. So again, just be conscientious about the things that we need, but let's put off a little bit if we can. Doesn't matter how much, five, ten cents, it's still five or ten cents that we can smooth out. And I know that we've got a good person on it.
Yep.
So, thank you.
To the chair. Adam, what's the six million dollars in the MIU Act ninety-nine bonding, what was that?
So that's the, showing the money coming in.
From?
From going to bond for under Act ninety-nine.
Oh, that's the bond we're gonna take out?
And then, and then spending approximately two million, two million a year for three years.
So that's not the one that we've already got, that's, that's our-
No, that's gonna be new.
Unless we get five million, something that we're not expecting, wouldn't have to go out for bond.
So there's no, so like, there's no debt payment associated with it yet, right? So like, I have six million coming in and six million going out, the actual, for the actual work to be done, the debt payment won't actually get worked in for another year or two.
Okay.
As we go through this process. We have, that we're, may do this under Act ninety-nine, only because Act ninety-nine, and this is Pam McGow's territory, but that's very similar. We did an Act ninety-nine loan, if you remember, when the port needed this approximately one million dollars left over to finish what they wanted to do next door. And so it's a shorter-term loan, but we, it caps at ten years. And for this project, we can't go to debt for more than ten years, because the, you can't go to bond, like, if, if the equipment is going to become obsolete or reach end of life, you can't, you know, in ten years, you can't do a twenty-year bond.
Right.
And that's why that ties together.
You said the six million was coming in and then six million going out. If it's an in-and-out and the money's there, why do we need a bond?
No, the money's not there, I'm just showing it within my debt budget line, there's a separate column for the debt service.
That's gonna be there.
That's going to be there, yeah, right. The other document is the normal budget itself, for all of you to approve this evening. I don't really, unless anybody has specific questions about it, I don't really have anything to discuss on it. And like I said, all of the revenue and expense lines, for the most part, all came from this giant sheet of paper. We didn't make any changes to the staffing, we didn't make any changes to, you know, our average allocations. It's all very much just based off of what came from either this sheet of paper or this sheet of paper. But if anybody has questions, I will of course take them.
To the chair, the only question I have, Adam, is regarding version one and version three, is this something that we're supposed to build on? Or just kind of give you a, you're going to do version three, or?
So the, I'm not even going to mention the version one and version three this evening in the actual meeting. I wanted to ensure you understood that. But the resolution that was prepared for this evening is, is the numbers that are in it reflect version three.
Okay.
Yep.
So once we approve that, then we've approved version three?
Exactly.
Brilliant, all right, thank you.
Anything else from the board?
To the chair, I just want to, as always, I want to thank you for a good job, Adam.
Thank you.
Yeah. We spoke about this a few weeks ago, and the forecast was a lot more gloomy than what I got here today.
It definitely was, sir, and that was really related to that dwarf project. So I think it worked out for the best that, from a timing perspective, that's been delayed a year. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, thanks for making it easy to understand, for what we're stuck.
Yes, indeed.
Tom must be some kind of genius to be able to understand this for the last forty years, because some of the terminology and-
It's all up here, Tom, yeah.
It's all up here.
Anything else from the board? Here are any other questions, this meeting's adjourned, so everybody back at six-thirty.